On the property included in the package. Primary thing before this board is looking to approve the connection and approve the amount of the special connection fee for the proposed building to connect to Santeri Sewers. The connection fee is determined based upon the use of the building and the size of the building. They're proposing to connect about 2,900 square feet of commercial floor area on the first floor and six apartment units on the second and third units, which will be constructed as part of the building construction. The resultant special connection fee based upon three units for the 2,900 square feet of commercial property, that's about, that's $12,000. And each residential unit pays a special connection rate of $12,300 per unit for the six units. The net special connection fee for the property is $85,800. There's a suggested motion before you, and basically, this is a developer that has the development rights to the property and the property owner, they both have to enter into the agreement for the suggested motion authorizing the connection and the payment of the fees. I've referred this to the town attorney's office, he's edited it, he put the wording in regarding the suggested motion regarding the property owner and the developer rights. He also put in a, he added the provision that they waive the rights to a public hearing and appeal in accordance with section CGS seven dash two fifty-five. He thought that was appropriate to include it in there, and that's his suggested addition, and it's been added to the suggested motion. That's pretty much it. Again, it will give approval for that property to connect to Santeri Sewers. They still got to go through the planning and zoning process, that's the next step. But this is really the first step along the way. And again, the important thing is, the other buildings on the property, there's the ability to connect to Santeri Sewers, but they'd have to come back, request permission from the WPCA to connect and pay a subsequent special connection fee at that time.
Kurt, any idea what the commercial side of that will be?
No, I don't.
That'll be through planning and zoning?
I believe it's retail, but I'm not sure at this point. Again, that'll be before planning and zoning, and they'll...
I'm just saying, if a restaurant or something went in there, you know, what? How is the sewer usage based on a meter?
They would be based upon the board of consumption, because they would be connected to public water.
Okay.
Right.
Kurt, the special connection fees that we collect...
Yep.
Does that go towards capital?
It goes towards the capital fund, paying for things like pump replacements, building maintenance repairs, that type of operation. If there was a problem with a Santeri sewer line, and we had to make a capital repair to the sewer, it would go towards that. We've used them, the biggest, we've used the capital money in the past towards pump station upgrades, because that's our biggest expense.
Okay. Does it go for capital expense to other towns' capital, like, that we go into, whether it's North Haven or Bramford, or is it all just New Haven, Greater New Haven?
Well, for all those, over the years, it's helped pay for the upgrades to the Bramford Sewer Treatment Plant and the North Haven Treatment Plant. But those are both two big expenses, the supplemental fees that were collected from the special connections and supplemental sewer assessments were utilized to pay for those.
Okay.
Yep.
Is this building, well, is there any restrictions in that, in that triangle or building, or building codes as far as height, size, width? And if so, do you know if this falls into that?
Well, height is thirty-five feet is the allowable. When it goes through the planning and zoning process, everything will be verified in terms of the proposed, you know...
Are those, I'm just asking, are the current structures there, are those three floors?
Not necessarily. I think some of them are two.
This is three, right?
This is three. It's got to go through planning and zoning, there's a special use process, because when they want to do the apartment units over it, that requires a special, a special use from planning and zoning for that. Again, there is a suggested motion for your consideration.
Well, I just, then I have another question.
Oh, sure.
If, if in fact, which I don't know, if it doesn't meet current requirements, if it doesn't, then would we vote on that anyways, and see if it passes planning and zoning? Or do we already know it does meet whatever?
Planning and zoning can have special conditions, again, it's a special use, it could modify, they could deny it potentially. That's a possibility, or they can make enough changes. If they made enough changes, if they made changes to the billing and the use, then it would have to come back here for a subsequent, because it would be a different, different billing at that point. Usually, the first step, planning and zoning can't act until all other bodies act on it. Wetlands, Port of Pooch Control Authority, they're the first ones that have to act. Planning and zoning is the final body to take any action on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we vote on it and then turn it over to them.
Yeah, and again, if something, if it weren't to be passed by planning and zoning for some reason, or there was a modification, if it weren't to be passed, and it just wouldn't go any further, you know, this would be a meaningless approval at that point.
That helps, I just was curious, because I didn't know.
Yep.
But do we know, are they, Kurt, do we know, are they asking for any variances or anything to build this building, or is it all following?
They're not asking for any variances. They've had preliminary discussions with planning and zoning. I haven't been involved, you know, in that part of the process, that was done a while back. But again, for the final process, they've got to come in, we have to verify everything is compliant.
But what they're proposing right now falls in with they don't need variances?
The planning and zoning actually revise the regulations in discussions with the property owner to make provisions that would allow for the additional apartment units in the building. So planning and zoning is aware of it. They haven't seen the final application, they've seen the concept. The final application has to comply with planning and zoning regulations.
If my memory is correct, when this project was approved, it was five unit, or five building commercial project on that site.
Right.
Is this building and its location and size consistent with that original approval? Is the original approval still valid and in force?
To be honest with you, I know, because, yeah, you're right, there were five buildings, this makes the fourth building. I believe, I'm trying to recall, because it's a long time ago too, Joe. There was one...
We want to talk about that.
Yeah. Again, you're right, there was one more unit, but I haven't checked it for the planning and zoning compliance at this point.
Well, with that approval back, it's got to be at least twenty years ago.
Yeah, thirty years ago.
Is it still valid?
I don't know. Yeah, I mean...
I would assume somebody at zoning office would have checked.
Yeah.
If that approval, which you say is thirty years old, then well, maybe is no longer valid. And this is an intense use, I can't believe they would even entertain the proposal if the original approval no longer stood.
Yeah. I'll be honest with you, Joe, I haven't got into the whole planning and zoning review at this point. It was, Kerry DuCasse has been working it through the process. So, I was taken it through this process, and then it's going to go back to planning and zoning. So I can't tell you the full history on that.
Well, I tell you, the reason why I was asking, Kurt, is there's a certain aesthetic view right there, right now, and I think it's designed to be like that. Does this match that? You know, is it required to match, is the question, you know, that's why I was asking the questions.
Yeah, I mean, again, that would be part of the planning and zoning review and approval process.
I guess at the end of the day, we're not doing anything but getting the right hook up to the sewers.
Yeah, that's it.
And hopefully, P&amp;Z is going to do their job and make sure we don't end up with a site that's overdeveloped, or inconsistent with whatever was approved twenty or thirty years ago.
Yeah.
But I do have a little bit of concern, it's a pretty congested site for the center of Northford.
Yeah, I mean, again, historically, what I do recall, there was five original buildings to be on the site. There was an issue with the southerly part of the property because of the well, I think there had to be community wells there, and they couldn't build them at that time. So they only built, they built the three buildings.
Now, they ran into a problem with the state of Connecticut.
Right.
By having five buildings, they somehow, unbeknownst to them, became a water company. And that stopped them developing all five buildings. I just have some difficulty believing that that approval from way back when is still valid.
Yeah.
Plus, in the meantime, Joe, they had, now they have water and sewer there, so it's got to change it a little bit.
Yeah, look, if they meet the regulations and it doesn't bother them, I'm good.
It sounds like they changed the regulations to meet it now.
Yeah.
Probably another tax amendment.
Is this building close or to where they were going to put the fifth one originally in the plans?
I'd be lying if I told you, if I remembered exactly where the other buildings went and went.
Maybe Joe remembers.
I've got never anybody's built a rear deck in Charlotte.
Well, it looks like something was approved in February of two thousand and seven, so is that about what you're thinking?
I thought it was older than that.
Yes.
I mean, because there's a warranty deed in here that, as part of our package, that talks about the Northford Triangle Associates and the developmental rights.
Northford Triangle was approved by the time I came here, in eighty-seven, thereabouts.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Well, in order not to waste time, I'll move the motion as written in our packet.
Second.
Okay. Motion was made by Councilor Duddy, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote, Michelle?
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Ball in favor? Upstanding.
All right, next, next we have, Kurt, you'll keep an eye on that?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay. All right, next we have a request to connect proposed building, Santeri Sewers, fourteen thirty-seven Middletown Avenue, map sixty-seven D lot eighty-four.
All right, this item actually came before you back in November of two thousand and twenty, and was approved for the proposed additional building at fourteen thirty-seven Middletown Avenue to be connected to Santeri Sewers. I put together the required special connection fees based upon the information provided by the applicant at that time, which was for four thousand square feet of commercial floor area. They only provided a preliminary sketch at the time, but I did run it, I put it together, I ran the draft motion by the applicant sent in here for any comments as well, and that's what went before you back in November. Subsequently, when we had the agreement prepared in court with the approval, talking to the owner, he had a hard time, but he thought the fee was excessive, which was sixteen thousand dollars based upon the proposed four thousand square feet of commercial floor area. I looked at what he subsequently submitted with his billing department, application for the building, which had more detail, and had a better definition of uses, and in my opinion, it warranted a relook in terms of the, how the special connection fee was calculated. It might have been a little more, a little too aggressive when it came up with the original number, using the four thousand square feet of commercial floor area. Based upon the submitted architectural drawings with the building permit application, which were more detailed, I looked at the uses and the square footages of the building, and basically, there's about nineteen hundred square feet of garage area on the first floor, and, hold on one second. About nineteen hundred square feet of garage area, which really falls more under an industrial usage, I mean, it appears to me to be that, I just need your concurrence on that, and about fourteen hundred square feet of commercial floor office space usage on the second floor. Then that result, that comes down to about two units. The big difference is the industrial usage versus the commercial usage. One unit for three thousand square feet for industrial usage, and one unit per thousand square feet for commercial usage. I mean, in that result, that would increase, decrease the number of units, it's two connection units with a fee of eight thousand dollars. I spelled out, and I attached appropriate sections of our regulations to show you what I, you know, what I was basing it on. And I have a recommended motion for the, it's the same motion that was originally approved, except for lesser square footage, and a lower special connection fee of eight thousand dollars.
So instead of sixteen, it'll be reduced by fifty percent?
Yeah, and again, the big difference is industrial usage, one unit for every three thousand square feet versus commercial unit, one unit per one thousand square feet. And a little more detail, there were some wasted space, or just attic space on the second floor, so that reduced the square footage as well a little bit. But again, the big difference is, I have more detailed plan subsequent, you know, when it came in with the billing permit after the WPCA approval, and that's what I went off with, with this recent review.
Does the motion say sixteen thousand dollars?
That was the old one, it's eight thousand dollars.
So there's another motion?
It's a revised...
It's on the second page, is the revised motion. I, the other one with sixteen thousand was the old motion, I included as backup.
So what's the total, what's the total here? Thirteen ninety-eight versus in nineteen oh six?
Thirteen ninety-eight of commercial square footage, and nineteen hundred and six square feet of garage slash industrial usage of area.
So...
And then the industrial usage is one unit for every three thousand square feet, the commercial unit is one unit for every one thousand square feet.
Okay.
In that result, there's two units.
Kurt, if you don't mind, just give me a quick summary again, why is it being reduced by fifty percent, cut half?
When I figured it out originally, I figured everything being commercial usage, four thousand square feet, because it was just, square footage is what they gave me. And I put it all as commercial usage. The subsequent plan that went in with the building permit application has garage, garage doors on the lower level, and I've talked to the applicant, I mean, the owner about it, that's just for storage and garage area. So it's a different use, with a less, lesser intensity.
Are garages always separated out in the commercial operations as being an industrial use, as opposed to commercial?
I try to look at what they're trying to do, and every building is constructed a little different. This is more of an unusual one, they ran across. A lot of times, it's just a commercial use, and it's either business, retail, doctor or offices type of thing. This is more a storage area where they have office space above. That's why there's the different uses in there. And I tried to separate it, because it seemed to best describe the use. Usually, it's a consistent use, but this is an unusual one.
I guess I just want to make sure that it's consistent with all the businesses that are coming in, so, you know, others would probably just...
It's consistent, it's similar to what was recently came before this board for, I think it was twenty-six Mansfield Drive. They had a similar thing, and they had the detail, and it was almost, it was pretty close to the same use. They had a split use, they had a garage down below, and they had an office above. But that's, those are probably the only two I've ever seen like that, and they have to both come in pretty close together. But it seemed to best describe the use and account for the square footage. I mean, we're not trying to penalize, I mean, I'm trying to be consistent, you're a hundred percent correct for that, consistent and fair, and it is what it is.
So I'd like to move the motion, the revised suggested motion, that's in our packet on page twenty-nine of our tablet, and basically, it's the same motion, except it's reducing the special connection fee down to eight thousand dollars based on the new calculations.
Second.
I'll second it.
Joe, that was you?
Yeah, it was.
Okay. Motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Fawnen. Any further discussion?
I just have one quick, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Kurt, just one quick question. On the, on the drawing that shows the lower level, I just want to make sure I'm seeing this right, that it's an L-shaped building, correct?
That's correct.
And in the front, it shows two garage doors with a walk-through in between the two garage doors?
That's correct.
And then they're also calling the back of the building the garage as well?
Yes.
There's no garage doors there, though?
Not shown.
So how is that a garage?
I'm going by what they're labeled and what their intended use is.
I mean, it's obvious the front part is a garage.
The way it was described to me is, that's where it was to store materials. So, but my understanding is they bring them in from the main, main area, but it's all, it's all material being stored.
So if it's material storage, it still falls under that same category?
Yeah.
Not commercial?
That's...
Storage is industrial?
Yes. That's why I included copies of the definition.
No, I just wanted to make sure, I just noticed.
Yeah, I tried to be consistent. Industrial use is any use of a structure as a place to manufacture, fabricate, repair, build, package, assemble, store, demolish, process, or transform the quality of state of any...
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, I have the motion in a second. Do we have a vote, Michelle?
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Upstanding?
Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt. Next, we have citizen statements and petitions. Mike, do you have? Anthony, back there, you guys have anything?
One moment. No comments via email.
Okay. Anthony, you're all set?
Yeah, I'll start.
Okay, next is...
Mr. Mayor, before we continue on, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda and add item thirteen E, discussion on the Stanley T. Williams roof.
What was thirteen E wrote?
The Stanley T. Williams roof.
Thank you. I'll second her motion.
Okay. Motion was made by Councilor, any, motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Fawnen, any discussion on that? Can we have a vote, Michelle?
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Upstanding?
Okay, next is reports of committees, boards, and commissions. First is Economic Development Commission Roger Soloway's monthly report.
So EDC met last night, I was only there for a portion of the meeting, because I had another meeting, but a good part of their meeting was a presentation by the Belafonte Companies. They are looking to put in a luxury apartment complex by the ice rink. So, it's in the beginning stages, they have not come, you know, they've talked to planning and zoning, they're getting everything together, and I know one of their biggest concerns is the special connection fee for sewers, because they want to hook up to sewers. So, if it moves forward, it's, I do expect that to come before the council on that. And as we heard earlier, the special connection fees are used to pay for capital things, and it's not, I mean, we don't have our own sewer treatment plant here, so we're paying for not only our pumping stations, but for where our sewage goes into, whether it's North Haven, Bramford, Greater New Haven, so it's a critical piece for us, because those people that do pay for sewers, that have sewers, if we didn't have those fees, it would be, those people would be paying a lot of money on their sewer bills. So, at this point, so there, right now, it's proposed for a hundred and twenty units, but there's a lot of work that has to be done between planning and zoning and everything else for that area in there. But I do expect it to come forward at some point in time to the council.
Okay, thanks, Rose. Next is Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Recreation met last week, I guess. A lot of their discussion was held in regards to the Polco Fest for this year. They are waiting in... They are waiting until their next meeting, or well, they're, they would, they're going to decide by May first if the festival will be going forward on there. But with all of their major vendors, which is the rides, the tent company, the fireworks, a lot of those, they all have agreements that if it's not held this year due to COVID, there's no money out. They, they won't be penalized for anything. So they are negotiating all of that with their contractors on there. So with the, you know, with all the vaccines that are now coming out and more people getting vaccinated and numbers going in the right way, they would just like, rather than make the call now, they would just like a little bit more time before they make that call to see what's going to happen with it.
What'd you say, May first?
Um, I believe it's May, right? So it might be like at their April meeting because it's the end of April on there. But they are also talking about, in the event that they don't hold the Poco Fest for this year, is to have other special events on a smaller scale, kind of deconstructing the Poco Fest and having smaller things throughout the summer and into the fall. Jessie and her team have been very proactive in coming up with ideas. They are also, they just kicked off a fundraiser where you can buy, they have a limited number of tickets that they're selling and what they're doing to promote restaurants, delis, that sort of, the restaurants in town because they've been affected by COVID is they're raffling off a gift basket of twenty fifty-dollar gift certificates to various restaurants, delis, that sort of thing in North Bramford. So that's the first prize is twenty fifty-dollar gift certificates. And there's also a gift certificate that Country Paint and Hardware donated. They've been a very huge supporter of the Poco Fest. So they are doing this fundraiser to raise money for the Poco Fest on there. And then there is just one other thing that I'm going to direct to the town attorney and I know they may not have an answer tonight, but several months ago, I think it was last year, they submitted several things to the town attorney that they're waiting for approval on. Language it has to do, there's three items. The food vendor application.
I have that, sorry.
You got, okay. Permanent signs for the park and rec fields. And also a question in regards to comments from the public in regards to their minutes. And that was submitted last fall and they're still waiting for some guidance as to how to handle that. So I know you're new to him to this whole thing, but if you can just check in.
I will follow up on that tomorrow.
Yep, great. And that's it.
That's it, thanks Rose. Next we have Police Commission.
The Police Commission had a special meeting on Thursday, February eighteenth to approve the Police Commission Communications and Capital Budgets. The next regular meeting is Monday, March eighth.
Okay, thanks Marie. Uh, next is Fire Commission.
The next meeting is this Thursday.
Okay, next is Board of Education and Town Council Communications Subcommittee.
Uh, no meeting.
All right, next we have Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
No meeting.
Next is Planning and Zoning Commission.
Next meeting's Thursday, March fourth.
Okay. Uh, next we have North Bramford Police Department Facility and Town Center Advisory Committee.
The committee's having a special meeting on Monday, March eighth to review vendor presentations on furniture.
Right, and also to have some discussion on budgeted and non-budgeted items. That's this coming Monday.
Okay, thanks Marie. Next, Financial Subcommittee, Finance Subcommittee.
We meet every other month, so our next meeting is in April.
Okay. Uh, next we have on here Jay's Ad-Hoc Design Review Committee. Is that necessary to...
No, I think that can come off.
That committee's done with, right? Because that was strictly the high school.
Yeah.
And that moved to permanent projects, so...
Mike, you can take that off the next.
Sure, and if we go back to F, Town Planning Goals and Subcommittee, do you want to keep, continue that? Or should we put that on hiatus as well?
Why don't you take that off for now?
Take that off for now, okay.
Okay, uh, next is Permanent Project Building Committee.
I think that's kind of a placeholder, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because I, I think you've got an appointment tonight and then I was hoping just to say that...
Okay.
That'll be added, it is added, and that I'm hoping to, you know, make the calls to get them to an organizational meeting and working on picking a night that's going to work for them.
Okay. Very good. All right, next is Town Managers Report. Update on COVID-nineteen clinics in homebound East Shore District Health Department. I believe that's budget.
Yeah, I kind of threw a lot there in, in one category for health-related and, and the COVID. So you have the report in your packet, which is, you know, I think we mentioned last time the numbers are, are breaking and trending in the right direction. We talked a lot about, Mike went through where the numbers were, you know, November, December, you know, really significant numbers that climbed. And we, we dipped to twenty-five out of one hundred and sixty-nine towns. Since then we've rebounded and there on the report, page three, you see that we're back up to sixty-five and even this data is, is old. So the trend, I understand, is, is still going in our favor with, with the number of cases and, and our positivity rate. So things look better. And so I just, I don't know if there's any questions. There's a lot of, a lot of information in there and again, it's a, it's a, it's a bit old. I'll be getting additional numbers when we sit down again for our weekly meeting on Thursday morning. I can pass those on if council's interested as updated numbers. But as far as I know, the trend is still working in our favor.
Going that way across the country, so it's, just following it.
Well, we did, I mean, now we're at sixty-five, that's the way you want to go. You want to go to higher numbers.
Yes, exactly.
Compared to thirty-six. And when you look at the other towns...
Towns around us, yeah.
Are, we're doing much better than they are.
Yeah, it's, it's...
Madison, East Haven, Bramford.
Yeah.
We're doing much better than them, so...
Yeah, it's, it's almost, you know, we're opposite. If you looked at those numbers where Guilford was at one seventeen, Madison was at one eleven. So Madison went from one eleven to thirty-nine and Guilford was one seventeen down to eighty-five and, and East Haven is two. You know, and Bramford is at seventy-five, went to twenty-three. So there's no, you know, it's hard, it's hard to sort the, you know, what's happening in each, each community, but this is the one where I'm focused on and, and, you know, the numbers for us at this point, knocking wood, it's, it's working in our favor. You know, and I wanted to, just to, again, if there are more questions, I'll be happy to, to answer. But just wanted to combine the numbers here with the fact that we're running and operating the clinics and doing the best that we can to move as many people through the, the clinics. And as you know, the governor put together the, or made the emphasis on, on teachers. So there was a large clinic today to get those vaccinations out. And I know Jessie's here and her team has been invaluable in terms of running these clinics. This one moved from Stanley T. to the, to the high school because of the sheer volume. But I don't know if there was any final number on, on today's...
I believe that was two seventy-two or two seventy-four. We have the final call on that tomorrow.
Great.
A lot of that was school staff.
Yes, teacher's staff and, and, do you know how to break that when we, we've got twenty, twenty-two?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, yeah. So some of those, you know, were mixture of municipal employees, anyone that, you know, and again, with the category of now fifty-five and, and up. So we're working through the list on, on municipal employees that are, that are left and working with the, with the public as well. The library has also stepped in to help field calls when senior centers over, overwhelmed with, with the calls that are coming in there. And we're just, you know, doing the best we can coordinating with East Shore to make sure that we get information out about where the clinics are and, and how you can get signed up for them. One of the interesting thing is, is a strategy I added there on, on homebound. So it's particularly difficult to try and identify individuals that are homebound. And we're working on a strategy to get some messaging on that. And Louisa Breen in Social Services is helping and we're looking, you know, part of the, part of the issue is, is just defining homebound. So we're, we're coming up with a definition, but essentially an individual is unable to leave their home without difficulty. And that leaving would require considerable and taxing effort due to illness or injury restricting their ability to leave the home without supportive device such as a wheelchair or use of a special transportation, leaving the home is medically contradictory. And so, you know, it's, it's not that you, you may have, have given up driving and you can't get out. Somebody can come and get you. We're, we're trying to find the, by definition, homebound that, that really need our help. And I think that the Pfizer vaccination can help us as, as a, as a one-shot, one-and-done. So we're working through that. I don't have the final plan. East Shore is, is helping assist us with that, but it goes first to identifying. And we're looking to identify homebound by that definition and trying to reach them and coordinate with them and find and put together a strategy and a plan to get to those individuals. And I don't know yet how large that group is and that's part of the identification process, so...
You're talking about the Johnson and Johnson?
Well, I'm thinking, yeah, you know, if that comes online, and again, not knowing how long that's going to take and, and when and if we do get it, but it does help if there's only, if you only have to administer one shot rather than have to come back a second time. Because we're, we're trying to work out that strategy and how to administer, who's going to do it, who's going to take into the home to, to do that for those homebound individuals. So it's a, it, it's going to need some more work, more strategy. But anyway, we're, we're, we're working to, you know, to address that issue as well. And then the last thing, just on, on East Shore District's budget. If you prefer to have Mike Pascasilla as, as director come in on the sixteenth and add him to the sixteenth or we can add him to one of the other dates. But typically, you know, we, we, I think we've, in the past, reserved some, some time. So if there are no objections, I can put him on the, the sixteenth meeting and have him present.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And that's it for, for COVID and health-related issues.
Okay. All right, next we have review of RFP number nine slash RFP number six, North Bramford Intermediate School Masonry Project.
Yeah, so on, on this, I wanted to bring to your attention that it came up at, at one of, one of the meetings last week or, or previous meetings, not here, but the design review or selection committee, that's where it was. It was in the selection committee meeting that Rose Construction would be interested on the masonry repair project. Hadn't previously been, been interested, but indicated an interest and asked if the, the language of RFP nine was enough to, to, to use. I wasn't, I couldn't recall at the time, so I told Mr., told Al Rose that, that I would review RFP number nine and sure enough that I placed that in your, your packet on page, page five is the particular language that I wanted to bring to your attention as we did. And RFP number nine was for the auditorium work that we did last year. And the language and the last paragraph, selected firm or individual may be retained by the owner for services related to phase two at North Bramford Intermediate School for the 2021 construction season. Rate for continuation of this contract can be negotiated by the town and the firm individual for future needs. So, you know, it raises the, you know, the flexibility, the opportunity for the council to look at the bids that came in. I gave a, a copy of the RFPs. There were seven that came in today. Rose Construction was one of them. And I asked the town attorney and specifically talked with, with Tim about reviewing that issue to see if it does give the, if it's enough in terms of language to give the council flexibility to negotiate with Rose on the auditorium or if you just want to review the award and the, and the RFP for the next meeting.
Well, the problem is, is that it, because he was awarded last year, everyone knows what his rate is, what his rate was on there. So he's at a disadvantage because it was awarded and they all know and with the language that it's, you know, it can be related to the NBIS project on there. I feel that's a disadvantage to, you know, Rose Construction because everyone knows what the bid was on there.
Any company that does business with the public sector, we're going to know their rates and what they were paid. So any, any company that does public business, we're going to know their rate for other projects.
No, but we, the way I read this language, and we can have Tim, is that we wouldn't have had to go out to bid because we could have just negotiated with him because he had won the award for last year. And we wouldn't have had to go out to bid for the NBIS project. And, and the other part of that is, I know the proposal here has the hourly rates and what the estimate is and it's based on two hundred hours. Well, the auditorium work, that was the same hourly, you know, estimated hours for the auditorium. And it was approximately a hundred and fifty hours that was done for the auditorium. The NBIS project is way larger than the auditorium. And two, two hundred hours is not going to get us the project. I can tell you that right now, based on, and the auditorium was, probably, I think the bid came in to fix the auditorium brickwork was somewhere around sixty thousand dollars. NBIS is probably going to be over a half a million dollars, at least, based on the original estimate we have. And then there's been other problems identified. So, so the estimate total of work for the NBIS project, I believe, is very understated to what that project is going to cost us. We're not going to get it done for two hundred hours from anyone.
It's probably too understated to even look at RFP number six without making changes to it.
So I guess, I guess we're left with, and certainly Tim can weigh in, but if, if on the face of it, that language is enough to, if the council's interested to negotiate directly with Rose Construction on the project, I guess would be the first threshold question.
Right, so...
That would be my recommendation. Otherwise you have a flaw in, in RFP number six already, so...
So we took a look at, is it okay if I stand?
You might have to cut to the mic just so that they can hear it.
I'm going to apologize in advance if my mask offends any non-Giants fans here tonight. We, we took a look at a few, a few things. We looked at the contract language and then we also looked at this, obviously in the context of the Permanent Project Building Committee. Because what has happened is, if I understand the timeline correctly, you had a, a bid award to Rose. And then after that bid award, you had an individual affiliated with this company appointed to the BPBC. And so you now have a situation where the BPBC might be involved in the review of and approval of continued work under that future needs provision. So I had Owen Weaver and my firm conduct an analysis of, of the language... So I had Owen Weaver and my firm conduct an analysis of of the language, not only in the contract, but also your ethics code, and how, on a go-forward basis, this should be handled in the event that you do elect to proceed with the Rose RFP. If you elect to proceed with the existing contract language and the provision that allows for future needs, I have to advise you that if Rose is used on a go-forward basis, and it is referred to the PPBC, or the council elects to refer to the PPBC, Mr. Rose is going to have to recuse himself from all proceedings involving anything that he might be working on that will be reviewed by the committee of which he's a member. So that's an additional layer of consideration that you're going to have to just go into eyes wide open. There's going to have to be disclosure and a recusal.
So I just want to state one thing, just so everybody's on the same page. The Permanent Project Building Committee right now is not active. It's not, it's not full, so as of right now, there's no issue with that. The second part of that is, there's been talk about having Al step down to an alternate position on the Permanent Project Building Committee, which means he would not have a vote. He would just be able to add comment to those meetings. Is that, would he still be able to do that?
Can't comment.
Okay.
You can't, you can't take any type of an affirmative act, even in the absence of a vote, that would suggest participation in something where you might be directly or indirectly involved, involved in in a personal or professional capacity.
So then he'd he'd have to step down from the permanent project building.
He would have to recuse himself from any matter involving his company that would have come before the PPBC.
Well, so he could stay on, he just couldn't have anything to do with these projects.
Yeah, anything that he is involved, anything that his his construction company is involved in. And and look, he might bid on future work and he might not get it. And then it's not an issue if he is sitting on the committee and casting votes or participating in deliberations involving another vendor or another contractor. But if if there's a vote on a contract award, if there's a review by the committee on any work that he undertakes, he cannot participate in anything related to his company's.
Can can, and this is to, I guess, you guys too, that have been around along with me, could could an alternate that, could an alternate then step in and fill his position so that there's a full commission or a full board or whatever?
An alternate, yeah, I mean, an alternate only would be a voting member if there wasn't, if the five regular members weren't there.
Right, so.
Or if somebody abstains, you know, or recuses himself.
Yeah, because if Al recuses himself, then you're left with an even number, which could be.
Right, so there'd be, right.
An issue, so an alternate could then step into his role for that purpose, right?
That's the general intent of having all of those boards and commissions. If there's an absence of a member, or if, for whatever reason, there's a conflict that causes a member to have to refuse themselves, then the alternate steps in.
Makes sense.
So in other words, Tim, just so I understand this, so an alternate can step in and out of the role throughout the same meeting?
Depending upon the language for an alternate that's codified in a municipal code or your charter. In the event that, let's say, for example, municipal code or charter says there's going to be a committee of five people with two alternates or three alternates. If you have a five-member board and one person is conflicted, and they don't have the ability or capacity to have an alternate replace them, to come from the logician's point, then you would have a two-two vote, motion fails. So then having the alternate elevate when that member recuses themselves, it then allows for a deliberative process with the finality, or you could have a three-two vote.
Okay, thank you.
So the the second sentence of this language from RFP nine, where it says, rate for continuation of this contract may can be negotiated by the town and the firm or individual for future needs, is it that, I guess, part of our question is, future needs, it's not just the NBIS project, it could be any project that we have in town?
Well, you see, I I could make an argument that, I can make an argument either way. I could make an argument that because the RFP, and I've looked at the RFP, was was specific to that specific need, if a future need arises as it relates to that RFP, that project-specific RFP, that if future needs arise based upon that project-specific RFP, it should be restricted to that project. Although, because it it says future needs, and it doesn't say future needs of the project, somebody could interpret it the other way.
Well, because of the first sentence saying that we, the town, has the right to negotiate for phase two of the NBIS project.
Correct.
And then it goes into future projects after that, so so it could go either way, is what you're saying?
Yes, it could.
Okay.
So, so I guess I'll I'll throw this out for Tim as well. I I guess, following that that line from Councilor Angeloni, if the council was satisfied the track record and and the performance of the auditorium work, wanted to go with Rose Construction, they could actually, to do the high school and the PD based on on that as future as future needs?
I would advise against that. I would advise against that point. And that's why I think, you know, it's it's important that, you know, the interpretation be such that you can obviously not restrict your right in the future if you want specifically tailor an RFP for a future use, you're able to do that. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, well, yeah, I was just, if if, yeah, I thought I thought you'd said earlier it would go either way, and that's why I was thinking, well, then, future needs, if if, because we are going to be looking, the council's going to wrestle with the fact that clerk of the works, and essentially, this is what this is, where you, the semantics, if you call it an owner's rep or clerk of the works, if you know the track record of a of a company and and had a successful outcome, and we have language that says they can go to to the NBIS, and we have future needs in the high school and in the PD, could we engage that firm or that construction company? Yep. In in doing, in negotiating, not just NBIS, but negotiating with them on capacity and ability to do the high school and the PD? That was essentially.
This RFP, though, pertained specifically to the masonry repairs, and only referenced the North Branford Intermediate School.
Right.
It did not reference in the RFP, the police department.
Right, okay.
So if it wasn't referenced in the original RFP, again, project-specific. But the point I was trying to make was when I said either way, it pertained to.
For NBIS?
NBIS.
Okay.
Well, no, actually, this language came from the first one, which was the auditorium. The language.
RFP nine was for the auditorium.
Correct, and but then it only referenced.
Only referenced NBIS, phase two NBIS.
There were two things in that RFP. So in other words, the question he's asking was, the police department wasn't referenced in that RFP, and the other project that you referenced was not.
High school.
High school's not referenced in that RFP. So when I said either way, I was speaking.
Oh, you weren't, not future needs? No, you were talking about the auditorium NBIS.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry to clarify that better.
All right, that's, I think that's where the confusion.
Because when it talks about a, if an RFP is talking about a specific project, and then references another specific project, and then talks about future needs, then you would, when I said go either way, it could be the project that it is specific to and the project that's referenced for a future need.
Okay.
But since the police department and the other project were not referenced, I would not, I would not make that recommendation at all.
Okay.
Right, because at that time that that was created, I remember now, we were talking about both.
They were both going to be done in the same summer, and then it got split.
And then there was some further work that needed to be done, and we said, oh, we'll want that in there so we don't have to go rebid it again. I believe that's what was said, right? I I, as I recall.
So it's the future needs of that project.
Yeah, of the NBIS.
Because when you think about it from a practical standpoint, you might, let's say tomorrow, you know, we decide not to pursue some of the other capital projects you're contemplating. Well, you can't talk about a future need that isn't identified. So the future need that was identified was the NBIS.
Okay.
So, you know, at this point, again, the question, I can bring it, I can bring this item back with the final analysis, you know, of the RFP for discussion and action for the meeting on the sixteenth, and whether the council wants to enter into negotiations with Rose Construction for the NBIS project. Unless you, unless you want to make that, I don't want to put any pressure to make that decision tonight, that's why I offered the to prep it and bring it back for the sixteenth, unless you feel comfortable making a decision tonight.
But prep, prep what, based on this?
Well, I mean, yeah, there's, there's not a whole lot, this you, this you set aside, because I think, I think the the language in in nine takes precedent, and that's where, if if you're comfortable with with that.
Want to put it off for the sixteen?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not starting, the project hasn't even gone out to bid yet, so.
So we can table it for now?
So we can, you can, we can come back for the the sixteenth on there.
We don't even have to table it, we could just keep it on.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so I'll add that for the sixteenth.
Okay. Next, we have a discussion on contract review for North Branford High School project.
Yeah, so this I added in after talking with with Tim about the assistance in terms of getting the Permanent Project Building Committee up and running, essentially, now that you've you've sent the high school project there, and the complexity of that project, and obviously, the the lot of moving parts and working with the state. Tim had suggested that the Permanent Project Building Committee, the town, could benefit from an expert in the field by the name of Jeff DiNofrio. And I know that Tim has had a lot more experience than I have. I know the name, and I know the town has used them successfully, and he has quite the reputation within Connecticut of, as knowing this stuff inside and out. And the size and magnitude of, you know, the the high school, it might make sense on the front end. Again, not to repeat and have problems like we did at NBIS, this would be something to raise for your discussion at this point in in time to see if it makes sense.
So what is, what exactly is this?
It, well.
So one of the things that Mike and I discussed, we were going over these these contracts for the project, given that this is a $66 million project, arguably, this is probably one of the largest, if not the largest, capital project ever undertaken in North Branford's history. And having gone through a $73 million, like-new renovation of a high school myself in a former life, I I kind of appreciate the nuances and the complexities. And one of the things that I learned from that process is that not only are you required to review very specific and detailed and fact-intensive contracts, but you're also going to have the building committee deal with the Connecticut Department of Administrative Services, specifically as it relates to school construction reimbursement. And it's a very nuanced process where the town will have to submit what's called an EDO forty-nine. It's going to have to detail certain fact-specific information to the state to guarantee that the town complies with reimbursement. It's a very specialized and skilled field, and Attorney DiNofrio has consulted municipalities across the state of Connecticut, specifically building committees, as it relates to reviewing your contracts to make sure they're iron-tight. And number two, to make sure that your paperwork that is filed with the state properly guarantees that whatever reimbursement you are entitled to, under the formula that's determined by the state, that you dot your i's and cross your t's to make sure there's no problems on the back end. So I'll give you an example. And back in 2008, the town of Trumbull was in the middle of a $73 million high school renovation. They wanted to build a $7 million naderatorium that would be standalone on the school property. At the time, we were told that the naderatorium would service the entire community. So it would be used by seniors during the day for aquatics programming, and that in the evening, it would be used by high school swim teams, intramural swim teams, or private high schools that would want to use the facility. The problem with that was that, and this is where they didn't listen to Jeff's advice, is that when you seek state reimbursement, whatever you're seeking reimbursement to, it has to be correlated with the overall educational purpose of the expenditure. So in other words, if you're going to spend $7 million on building a pool, and you're going to say it's subject to state reimbursement, it's got to be correlated to the educational purpose subject to reimbursement. So in actuality, what we later found out was that the community would, if you were going to apply for reimbursement, the community would not be able to use the pool during the day because it wasn't correlated to education. So then the debate was, why are we spending $7 million on something that the community can't even use during the day? And then you had this. So it kind of goes back to one of the things that I said at a previous meeting, when you start wrong, you end wrong. So where your numbers are coming in at real competitive rates on the front end, it's important to have somebody with construction, legal construction experience to make sure that you do not get clobbered with change orders on the back end. You want to make sure that your contract's ironclad. And I should also note that this is common with construction projects of this magnitude, where this is a construction-related cost that wouldn't necessarily come out of your operating, but would be built into your construction budget, which, as I understand, the town has, in principle and in theory, approved that dollar amount as associated with your construction budget. Taking it a step further, and we've gotten into this with other items as of late, we represent the town of North Branford, we represent all of you, you hire us. If there becomes a situation where the PPBC is in conflict with the town council, for whatever reason, during the course of construction, let's say there's a dispute over a contract, a construction amount, let's say down the road, there's a problem on the back end with a contractor, to guarantee that there is segregation of duties and no conflicts, I would recommend that the PPBC should build into that budget a line item that covers legal associated with construction contracts and also the application to the state for reimbursement. And that's here, and then we're here representing all of you. I just think it's it's important to do this in a way that you get it right, right out of the gate, and if it's, and if it's not somebody like Attorney DiNofrio, it is somebody in that field. You are dealing with a very significant, major capital project. If these things aren't properly managed from the beginning, I've seen it, I've lived it, you pay for it dearly on the back end. So I just come with that recommendation, it's ultimately your decision. Mike and I discussed it, and I felt it important that we bring it to your attention.
So the EDO forty-nine is actually, so those, that paperwork, my understanding and based on other school projects that we've done, that is through the Board of Education, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and my understanding from the interview process that I've been on for the architect and the construction management company and everything else, is that our architect, QANM, Rusty, has said that he is doing all of the paperwork for the state for reimbursement on there.
Correct.
So would this be covered under what Rusty is going to do from QANM?
They prepare it, I guess what I'm getting at is, you want to make sure that what's, you want to make sure that there's, to have internal controls in place that cross-check one another. In other words, Rusty, by the way, I've used that architectural firm as well, they're outstanding. They designed our community center, they're very good. You just want to make sure you have different players lined up to cross-check others, to make sure that while they're preparing the paperwork, we want to make sure that it it is legally compliant with the statutory. is legally compliant with the statutory requirements that the state insists upon filing. We also want to make sure that somebody with a high level of construction litigation pedigree, who's been involved in extensive construction litigation, also looks at your contracts from the onset to make sure that you, that there are no loopholes where you're going to get clobbered with change orders on the backend, because I've seen that too, I've lived through that. That's not pleasant either. And I, and I know that this council's very sensitive to cost containment and cost control and, and consistent with what I believe to be your overall philosophy with taxpayer dollars. It's important to put those safeguards in upfront to make sure the taxpayers don't get clobbered on the backend.
What do you think the cost would be for us to have him for this project? What ballpark?
A sixty-six million dollar project. Be hard for me to ballpark it, I, I would, I would say that.
Why don't we just have Michael look into it?
Yeah.
And then come back with a report.
Yeah.
Because I would like to hear from Rusty, because it's very conflicting, all of the reports that we have gotten and, and I don't remember when we built Jerome Harrison or the auditorium, I wasn't on the council for MBIS, having something like this and, and, you know, the architect is the one, in the Board of Ed, is the one that submitted all of the documents to the state for reimbursement and things. And I don't know, I mean, this has not been budgeted in the proj, in the project as far as I know and stuff and is it a reimbursable expense to have that? I, I don't know. I mean, so, I think we just need to get more information and to talk to Rusty and.
Would it be on an as-needed basis?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's another ask. There's no fixed.
Yeah, so it'd be a, an extension of, I mean, if the permanent project building committee has a value add to them in terms of, on an as-needed basis to review, mainly upfront from what I understand upfront, but I think certainly we have Rusty here and, and I think he could weigh in. But I, I'm certainly happy to, to gather more information and, and when Tim and I discussed it, I thought, yeah, that might be the, a layer of, again, getting it right from the get-go is what we want to do.
So, you can talk to him, Mike, and get a, an idea of what he feels roughly it would cost for a project that's off.
Yeah, some type of hour cap and some type of fee cap.
Yeah, also include the other schools that we, that I, I know that our town board has done a lot of work looking at other towns and their projects and I'd be curious to know how many of them that we were looking at used the same type of special counsel.
Michelle, you want to say something?
Yes. Hi. Attorney DiNofrio is, as Tim said, highly regarded in the construction legal aspects. He's used, he has been used by multiple towns in the state of Connecticut. We used him here in the past for construction projects. He also teaches AIA contracts as a class. He's also presented to my Purchasing Association, so he's very well-versed in construction. And as Tim said, he's highly regarded here in the state of Connecticut. And if you'd like, I can certainly put out to my purchasing members to see how many of them currently use them or have used them. Well, like I said, we have used them here when we did MBIS, so, very knowledgeable.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move into our community events and presentations. Nothing.
I think I, I, hold on. Was there anything you wanted to, to plug for the record? Yeah. Well, I, I know there's nothing listed, but I think we, we don't want to lose an opportunity.
Yeah.
All right. We have a few community events coming up. We have a bunny trail, bunny tail trail coming up, similar to what we did at Candy Cayman Lane. So, it'll be a drive-through event at STW where families can come through. It's going to be March twenty-seventh from ten to eleven-thirty. We're also doing a fundraiser at Lake Rose addressed for the Poco Festival where we'll be raffling off the gift cards. And just to clarify, those gift cards are being purchased from the businesses. So, the raffle also supports the business because we are purchasing all of those gift cards, so we're not asking for donations. Country Paint and Hardware was kind enough to give us a donation, but we're not requesting it from the business. We're trying to make sure that we're supporting local as much as possible while raising money, so, thank you.
Yeah, you guys are doing a, a great job. I, I was looking into Totucka Times last week and, I think it was last week, you have a whole bunch of things going on.
Yeah.
At, at this, this time with all this going on, that's, that's fantastic.
Thank you, yeah, we're really trying.
Okay. Next, the citizen statements and petitions and correspondence. No?
No.
Okay. There we go. Let's go into resignations and appointments. First, I have appointment of Robert Witworth to Permanent Republican to the Permanent Project Building Committee, term to expire eleven-thirty, two thousand twenty-five, resume is attached.
So moved.
Second. Either way. Okay.
All right, Rose and Walter. Any discussion? Can I have a vote, Michelle?
Ballot?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed.
Okay. Next is appointment of Bruce Ferret.
Verone.
Verone. A Republican to Parks and Recreation Commission, term to expire twelve-thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one, resume is attached.
So moved.
Second.
Rose and Ron. Any discussion? Vote please, Michelle.
Ballot?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstained.
Next is appointment of Jeffrey McMillan, Republican to Pension Committee to fill Carolyn Candelora's position, term to expire twelve, twelve-one of twenty-one, as requested by Board of Education. Board of Ed minutes are attached.
So moved.
Second.
Was that Walt?
Yeah.
Walt and, and Mike. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote, Michelle?
Ballot?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstained.
Next, we have appointment of Jeffrey McMillan, Republican to Permanent Project Building Committee, as requested by Board of Education, Board of Ed minutes attached.
So moved. Second.
Ron and Walt. Any discussion? Can I have a vote, please?
Ballot?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstained.
Next is appointment of Elizabeth Siena, Republican to the Permanent Project Building Committee as required by Board of Education, Board of Edu, Education minutes are attached.
So moved.
Second.
Ron and Mike. Any discussion? Can I have a vote, please?
Ballot?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Abstained.
Next is reappointment of Melissa Pantolino, Republican to the Economic Development Commission, term to expire twelve-thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one to replace Jan Finch. Melissa's currently an alternate on EDC and she will be filing, filling the vacancy of Community Member-at-Large with commercial loan and marketing background.
So moved.
Second.
Walt, Walt and Mike, any discussion? Can I have a vote?
Ballot?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstained.
Next is reappointment of Ronald Siena, Republican to the Planning and Zoning Commission, term to expire five-thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Ron, Mike, Ron and Mike. Discussion, vote please.
Ballot?
Aye.
Aye. Next is reappointment of Har, Harri Dukla.
Dulac.
Dulac. Republican to the Planning and Zoning Commission, term to expire five-thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved. Second.
Who was that, Tommy?
That was me.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano and, and second by Councilor Policia. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote, please?
Ballot?
Aye.
Aye. Next is reappointment of Steve Scavo, Republican to the Planning and Zoning Commission as an alternate, term to expire five-thirty, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Walt and Mike. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote?
Ballot?
Aye.
Aye.
And last is a reappointment of John Pollitt, Republican to the Police Commission, term to expire twelve-thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll move that. Second.
Mike and.
Me.
Oh, Tommy. Discussion? Vote please.
Ballot?
Aye.
Thank you, whoever you want, thank you. Next, we have unfinished business, discussion and action. First is Rusty Malik, update on North Branford High School building project.
Good evening.
Hi, Rusty.
So, we are, we finished schematic design a few weeks ago and we're about fifty percent done with, completed with the design development phase. Design development is, is the phase where we've got the concept together, we're really coming up with all the finishes, all the materials that are going to be used, building sections, organizing it and it's, the estimate for the, the project during the design development estimate is one of the most important estimates that we'll do because really the construction manager will begin to understand the entirety of the building. And then our next phase after that is construction documents, which is really then filling in all the information, the detailed information for the, the const, the, the design development phase. So, that's moving forward on schedule. We have, as I mentioned before, a meeting with the state for the fifteenth of April for the DDR review. It's one of the processes and after that, we'll go back again for what's called a PCR review, which is the construction document review before we can go out to bid. The construction manager has met with us. We have a, every Friday, we have a meeting with the entire team, John is on there and, so we want to, you know, have a discussion about everything that's going on, make sure if there's any information that's lacking, he's, he's really valuable in terms of giving us some background information or even talking about systems that the building, you know, that they want to use in the building to make sure it's, it's user-friendly and, and how, how they would interact with it. So, you know, the Gilbane was at that meeting, we invited them to the meeting and we actually have another meeting with them on Thursday to go with a, a strategy meeting for not only the schedule, but also, you know, constructibility reviews and reviewing a model because we are creating this building in a BIM model and we will, we import it to them so that they can also see it virtually. So, that process is, is begun and we will talk about it in more detail on Thursday so that they can get up to speed. I want them to get up to speed in the sense that they, because they're sort of new to this pro, the, the project itself, not the process itself, but the project, and we want to give them as much information now because they have two weeks basically to get that DDR estimate put together and that's, that's a critical estimate and that's the estimate that'll go to the state because at every phase, we also provide an estimate to the state. So, they'll be working with us and developing that estimate, developing the site logistics plans, you know, and the overall project schedule. Our survey is complete, the geotechnical forings and, and drilling is all complete and now we're waiting on the reports. We've got some preliminary information and it's positive, so that's, that's good, we don't have to do any piles and that's, that's a, a really, it's a cost saver for us. The environmental review is ongoing. One of the questions that came up is trying to determine where the, the septic system, the old septic system is, and that's where John comes in really handy because he was able to sort of help guide us because there was not a lot of documentation to help, help us determine where exactly that system is. Hazmat work has started and they started actually Monday. I had a preliminary discussion with them based on some of their initial work. We're going to have another meeting with the hazmat consultant as well as the construction manager later this, this week or early next week, just to determine the, the extent that we want them to, to move forward. Because it's, when they're doing their testing, there's the substrate testing, which we talked about at the last meeting. And, you know, we'll, we want to be judicious about where they do it because if, if the, the consistency of, of where they're, the type of materials that they're working with and the age of the building is such that we can categorize them in a way that we can say, yes, this is similar to another area, then we don't have to test every space. You know, there are certain requirements and we'll do the minimum requirements and then evaluate before we continue to, you know, do more testing. The advantage is that we spend less money and, you know, we save that money from, and because ultimately, this building is going to be demolished. And so, why spend a lot of money testing if we can, you know, get the characteristics in, in a way that we're comfortable with what's, what's there. We met with the United Illumination for several reasons. One of them was to discuss where the transformers are, are going to go, the new transformers. There's always a question about new versus, how do you deal with the new and existing? You know, the existing's inside the building. Sometimes utility companies are concerned because when the new, new transformer in the first phase is online, now you've got two transformers, if there's a fire in the building, where do they go, how they shut off occurs. So, all these discussions have taken place with them. We've also had a discussion about the energy rebate. So, there's four different programs that they, that they shared with us and our engineers are working with them. We do the modeling, the, the certain criteria that we have to meet. Once we've met that criteria, we'll get a, a letter from them saying, yes, we meet these criteria, then we have to actually achieve those criteria. And once you achieve those criteria, then there's a rebate program. You know, that can be quite a few thousand dollars that the, will be money coming back to the community. So, that, that program and that work is underway. We've met with the, we've also had a, a meeting on high performance and high performance is one of the requirements of our project for the state. So, that ties in with the, the commissioning agent that's going to, that's, we received the proposals from today. At the next meeting, that commissioning agent hopefully will be on board with us and we'll discuss all the systems in the building to make sure we get to achieve the high performance levels. The good news is when you achieve high performance, it helps you in terms of achieving the energy rebate requirements of UI. So, it's, it's, it's something we have to do anyway, so why not do it and get, get the energy rebates? We met with the kitchen folks and, and that's been good just to talk about how the, how the service will be provided to the building, where the connections are going to be, what type of equipment will be used, so that information is ongoing. And then we're scheduling meetings with the teachers for our next phase, which is this, the design development phase. So, that, that process will begin to happen probably in the next two weeks. In terms of consultants that we still will need to bring onboard, there's the third-party structural review consultant. So, what happens is before the structure, and when we finish the structural design, it is a, because of the threshold of this particular building, we have to have a third-party independent review. We will have a, a third-party code review, we will do, we'll bring on material testing. So, when the construction is underway, they test the soils, they test the concrete and all that. So, that's fairly standard, all these things are budgeted for in our, in our overall project budget. So, there's a line item for every one of these items. And then, of course, the clerk of the works and commissioning. We are also going to be setting up a security meeting to review our security, safety and security measures, that's one of the requirements of the states, we have to fill out all these documents and when we go to the state, that's one of the prerequisites to getting approval. So, we'll, we'll be setting that meeting up with the police. So we, we'll be setting that meeting up with the police, police chief and other, you know, fire chief and so on because it has to be a comprehensive group that works on, on that and we meet together, we come up with the plan, we share our, our information with them. It's a, it's a private meeting because this is not something that we can, you know, have available to everybody, but the concept is discussed and we go through and identify all the measures that would be taken and then get their feedback as to what they would recommend, if there's any changes, then we make those changes and get the project, you know, moving in that direction. And I think that covers most of what I was going to...
Do you have the school security as part of that, you know, team, that security meeting?
Yes.
The schools, because I know they have a head of security and then...
Right, no, and they have to be, in fact, the superintendent is part of that discussion because he's the one that has to sign up on all the letters that, that need to go to the state as well. So, yeah, everybody, I mean, I just take that for granted that they're, they're going to be part of the group. And with that, I mean, I'm looking forward to the permanent building committee being on, you know, starting our meetings with them because, again, there's a lot of information that we've got to share, a lot of things that they need to be involved in. And it was going to get pretty intense with approvals, you know, we're, we're going to be talking about finishes, materials, all that stuff, we'll have boards and a lot of information and very little time, so the turnaround time will be very, you know, have to be very fast, it might even be that we'll show up with a lot of information at a meeting, make a presentation and then they will in turn have to take a vote on it. Hopefully, I know that, you know, the town's interested in something that's going to be durable, they're not interested in cutting corners and doing something cheap, especially in the public spaces and I wouldn't recommend anyway, you know, to you, to cut back on those. So we'll be discussing all the materials, surfaces, you know, what type of floor, flooring material, what type of walls, all that discussion will take place with the committee as we move forward, you know, including furniture and technology.
Do you have any comments about the earlier discussion with attorney Herbst in regards to...
So I think it's very important to have the contract with the, the construction manager, you know, looked at by somebody who's an expert in contracts. There are a lot of things and I like to weigh in on what the expectation is. For instance, you know, I want to be, make sure that constructibility review is written into their contracts so that they are, you know, responsible, we're working as a team. And I don't want it to be say, oh, we didn't know about this because I want it to be understood that they're experts in construction and they are, when they look at our drawings, should be commenting on our drawings to say, hey, we think you need to add some details here, oh, we need something, you know, a little bit more, more explanation in this area. And so that we, we, as a team, come up with a solution that minimizes change orders. So there's, there's certain language that I like to see in contracts and I think it's important to have. This is a construction manager at risk, so I know we're all going to be part of a, a team, but ultimately they're at risk. And so, you know, you look at them, you know, there's the advisor role and then there's the risk role, so they've got, you know, they're going to push back, they're going to be, you know, in many cases because there'll be construction change orders and when construction change orders come up, how do you, how does that get approved, which contingency that, does that money come out of? So those sort of things have to be addressed because there's a construction manager's change order contingency and then there's the owner's change order contingency. Construction managers always want the money to come out of the owner's contingency because they want to hold their money as much as possible, as long as possible. And I don't blame them, I'm just, that's just the way it, it is. And then we have to understand when each type of change order is approved, under what circumstances is it an owner's item and when, when is it a construction manager's item? So I think it's super important to have that very detailed review. And by the way, we do have a line item for legal in our soft costs. It's more for contract review than anything else, it's not for ongoing review although, you know, communities, if there's legal issues come up, then, then of course there's, there's other ways of addressing that. We certainly are very familiar with filing change orders and paperwork for the state. The actual filing has to be through the Board of Ed because it's all electronic, I can't access it. What I do is just like with the, when we were filing the oh-four-nines, I made a hard copy, I pretty much filled it in and then it was a matter of data entry to get it back to the, to the state. And that's the way the change orders will be and the construction managers will be very critical in the filing of the change orders because they develop all that paperwork, we review it and then it has to be filed through to the state. So it's important to, to, you know, have somebody, and we've got a firm that's very familiar with the, the whole state process, so that's, that's good as well. Then, of course, towards the end, the, the close-out phase is also very important and that's when a lot of documentation will be going to the state and it's important for us to develop it in a way that if we're consistent from the very beginning, then that filing, the close-out filing is a fairly simple process. But if you don't, if you're not consistent, it can be a bear. And so that's something that's important for us, you know, we sit down with the construction manager, set up a process and say, this is how it's going to get done. At the end of the day, the building committee and the Board of Ed can file that and it'll be relatively simple.
So you think it'd be a good thing to have somebody like that on the team doing this thing?
So I haven't worked with an attorney on the team itself. It's been on an as-needed basis, but mainly to review contracts. But, you know, you know, so, but having that knowledge there. The fact is, you're hiring us and you're hiring Gilbane, both of us have done, you know, thirty years of schools, so I've done hundreds of schools all through the state, so I know the process is pretty well, but there are times when we might need some legal advice in, in the overall process and I think that, that'll be good to, if there's somebody that's working with us when those situations come up. I mean, it, you know, the reality is, the construction manager at risk will be dealing with all the subcontracts, that's under them, so they're responsible for those individuals. Sometimes there may be a difference of opinion between the two of us and maybe that's where, you know, the attorneys come into, into play. So, you know, hopefully that's at a minimum or not at all, but knowing that there's somebody there, that would always be good.
Thank you.
I hear your, your answer as telling us that filling that role is desirable from your point of view and from your perception of the team's point of view. I guess I'd like to take, take it one step further. Do you see filling that role as a necessity for your team's work?
So as, as I said, most of my projects, the attorneys are involved in the contracts upfront. And that's where the responsibility stops. They're not on a committee or a part of, of weekly, daily discussion, you know, that goes on. And the only time then, then they've come to, come into, into play is if the, if a legal situation arises or there's conflict and we better resolve it. Let's say a subcontractor is going to default. Now that's under the construction manager at risk's responsibility because they're pertaining those, those, that subcontractor. But, you know, they may say, no, well, there's extenuating circumstances, so we shouldn't be having to deal with that or we shouldn't have, that, that expenditure shouldn't come out of our contingency, it should come out of the owner's contingency for some, you know, I'm just throwing out some hypothetical situation. And in that case, the attorney would, you know, would help fully attorney to weigh in on it if we feel that we're at odds with, with what the construction manager's saying. Doesn't arise too often, I mean, but it does, those situations do arise. So I wouldn't expect that attorney to be at the job meetings on every, every week or, you know, you know, maybe they come to a building committee, but usually it's when a, when a certain situation arises that we need their, their help and that's how I, that's how we would put that in front. Because ultimately you're, you know, it's an expense to the project and that's why when I say I have a budget line item for legal, it's more for contracts and, and those sort of things.
Just, just to add to that, obviously you've done a lot of high schools, how many other towns have hired an attorney like that, that you've worked with?
As, on a permanent basis for the project, I haven't, I haven't had that situation.
Okay.
But on a, you know, but for the contracts upfront, whether it's a town attorney or it's attorney that the town hires to review all those contracts, that happens all the time.
Okay.
Rusty, are we current on all critical path elements?
We are current in all critical path elements. And these other, you know, we can have a discussion, I was, I wanted to discuss these other consultants that we need to bring onboard with the construction manager also. I mean, there may be, as you can tell, when, when it comes through us or through the construction manager, we can, are able to get things done a lot quicker and we don't have to go through a lot of these, you know, going out for RFPs, although we still solicit three to four bids, so sometimes that'll help us along. The types of consultants that I identified are all needed during construction. And then, of course, the reviewers for the third-party review. Those, again, I've usually, you know, gone out and just got three or four proposals, there's not a lot of people that do that, there are some firms that do that, I typically go out to those folks and they, they give us proposals, we share that with you and, and go through that process. So the council can, can sort of weigh in on that or the committee, however that authority is, to get those, that, those folks onboard.
Thanks Rusty.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you Rusty, thank you. Okay, next is Poco twenty-twenty-one fireworks award to Atlas Fireworks.
Do you want me to come up with one? How's everyone doing?
Good, how are you?
Hi Mike. So I apologize again that I was not here last time to answer your questions, I did forward over the contracts. What we did is we looked into getting them for the next three years to lock in the price. When I talked to Atlas as far as the pricing went because fireworks come from China and things have kind of been disrupted, they actually secured a bunch ahead of time, so they actually are able to have that supply right now, so we wanted to lock those rates in for the next few years. All of the rates are, they would push out if we had to postpone this year, they would all push out. So it would be the next three years, we would be guaranteed that ten thousand dollar show with all the shops that they have on the proposal list that you guys saw last week. So we, if we did push out this year, we would be good until twenty twenty-four. So, and we wouldn't have to give them a depo, a deposit each year until February, so. Do you guys have questions on that?
The deposit is a year-by-year basis, I suppose.
Correct, so we would have to give them five thousand dollars soon to lock in for this year and then we would be able to postpone it up to only fifteen days in advance of the festival, which obviously would make a decision far before that, so.
And then the deposit would carry over like?
Correct, and then we would be able to give them a deposit again the following two years at the same price. And we've worked with Atlas in the past and they're wonderful, so they always give us a good show.
And the ti, and, I'm pretty sure, it's in there, but, I'm sorry. So the amount of time that the show is to go on for and the amount of shells and everything is the same for every year as well, right?
Correct, though this year, we've talked about different areas people can view the fireworks from, so possibly from the field where the car show normally is. In order to do that, they would have to sub out some of the smaller shells because the size of the shell determines how high they go in air. So we looked at firing them higher, but as a non-fireworks person, apparently that's not how it works. So we just have to have bigger shells, which would mean we would have a few less fireworks, but bigger displays that could be seen from farther out if we need to make people farther away from each other.
Gotcha. Thank you. Bigger's better.
Hopefully.
Okay, I guess, anybody else?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Move that motion.
Is there a motion?
It's ninety-three.
Do we have to approve this, we could...
Yeah, because we tabled, so there still have to be an award for the, for Atlas.
Oh, okay, I make a motion to approve, there is no...
Attached motion for twenty-twenty-one Poco Festival Agreement Number...
There must have been an RFP or something that went out, right? But there's, there's no notation on here as to what this was, which RFP it was. So I guess it's just to approve the agreement with Atlas Pyro Vision Entertainment Group for the fireworks for the Poco Fest.
Second.
The, oh, sorry. Motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampiano, any discussion?
Yeah, so this says that it's only for twenty-twenty-one, but we talked about a three-year...
Yep, there is two other contracts that were included in the drop box, three total contracts, one plus two others that I believe Mike and Gina put in the drop box that's under our house.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not sure they...
They are the, they're the same contract with different dates for the show, they just have the show dates updated for each year as well as the date they would need to...
In the original RFP, it was marked that they, that was one of the questions of the RFP, that they would retain their prices for two consecutive years after that, so I guess it...
So we'll have to vote on them each, each year? Or are we going to vote on them all now?
I think, I would recommend that we lock all of those prices in now because we don't know what would happen to the price of fireworks in the future, it's definitely not going to go down. So, and we can always adjust if we happen to make a ton of money and need to go up and make a bigger show. But it is also based on them giving us a good performance, so.
I guess I'm just confused as to why this, this couldn't have been done in one contract?
They, this is, no, they wrote it as three separate contracts. That's how she, she sent it to me because I believe of the different dates each year.
So it's for twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, but what happens if one of those years gets pushed out?
They all push.
Okay.
The roll.
So, so we're just approving for twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three and there's provisions in the contracts that move it if something happens?
Correct, so if this year gets canceled, it goes out three years beyond...
So we don't have to amend to say now we approved twenty-four because it automatically moves?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so I'll amend the motion so that we're approving the contract with Atlas for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three.
Second.
Just a question, has half all three contracts been reviewed by the town attorney's office, particularly the provision about rolling them over?
I can definitely send those over to them.
So you have to review them?
Yeah.
Then it's going to have to be subject to the town attorney's review and approval?
Right, so, but, I, I thought we went through this already, that before it gets on our agenda, it gets approved by the town attorney.
David did, yes.
Okay.
So David approved it already, so it's fine.
Okay, all right. So the motion is to approve with Atlas for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three for the Poco Fest fireworks.
Second.
I don't know how many times I get that.
That's a third, I think. Motion is made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampiano, any further discussion? No, you have a vote, please, Michelle?
Paul David?
Aye.
Next is a discussion in action on audit of purchasing a, a con... Next is a discussion in action on audit of purchasing accounts and slash procedures.
Yeah, the actual, there were some edits and revisions that went separately in the Dropbox. So there is a, you should all have access to the revised comments that went internally. And one other correction. I think Tim had taken out the comparison, I forget where I had it. Excuse me, over here. On page, page 17, on the, striking the reference to the Connecticut Municipal Audit Clients, comparing ourselves to other, other communities and population of 20,000 or more. Just wanted to edit that to say more comparable somewhere of those towns with populations of 10,000 to 20,000 versus anything over 20,000, just to, just to be closer in comparison because I think it's still an important point rather than strike all of it.
Mike, who made the corrections and why were they made?
I went internally with Anthony and myself looking at this and, again, trying to soften it a bit in terms of forensic to what the title is, Audit of Services for What You're Looking For in Terms of Internal Controls and Reporting Systems, not to flag any of the bond agencies or rating agencies with that. And then there were some other changes with respect to, you know, instead of reporting the insurers to the finance director, to the risk manager instead. Just some corrections of that nature.
And who's the risk manager?
What's that? Michelle.
Is that common to change the title of it?
I don't think so. It's not what we asked for.
Well, it's any title you want to put on it.
No, I'm asking though, is that, is that, is that common? Is that customary to change the title of that because of what you just said? I'm asking because I do not, I do not know the answer to that.
So you're specifically asking about the striking of the, of the word?
Of the term. Right. I just, I'm just, I just want to know for our benefit.
I mean, that's a valid point. If it, if it is going to affect bond ratings and stuff like that, it's a valid point.
Can you tell us the difference between forensic versus just audit?
Right.
So, and we kind of touched on this at one of the previous meetings that both David and I were at via Zoom. A forensic audit, and I'm gonna give you a lay definition, as I understand it, having been through two of them. A forensic audit tends to be a deep dive, if you will, where they, where auditor or group of auditors will go in and really surgically examine accounts, account practices, account procedures, and determine if there is anything amiss. A general audit really does an overview of systems, operations, internal controls. It will usually, a general audit will look at historical data. So you can't really take a snapshot of one year in time. They'll look at maybe a period of three years or five years to see trends. And an audit will generally make a series of recommendations to the organization as to what's going right, what could be improved, and then there'll be recommendations as to how to improve it. My experience with forensic audits has been on construction projects. So in that instance, you're dealing with a fixed amount of money or you might be dealing with cost overruns. You want to know what caused the cost overruns. So that's when you do the deep dive, go into the project on a line-by-line basis, compare it to the original project budget, and then really pinpoint where there were irregularities. So with your municipal budget, you know, you have, you have external audits every year. I'm standing away from this because it's a little bit of a rattle. But you have external audits every, every year where external audits come in. They look at your fund balance. They look at your operating budget. They look at your accounts, perhaps over a three-month, six-month, eight-month, twelve-month period. And then they make a report to your finance director, in this case, your treasurer. And those external audits are provided to rating agencies for the purposes of determining the credit profile and the credibility of the community. So that, you know, off the cuff is how I would distinguish the two. A forensic audit is very specific. It's a deep dive. It's seeking to look for specific information if there is a concern about irregularity. And a general operational audit takes examination of system processes and determines if there are areas for improvement, strengths, and how the improvements or weaknesses can be corrected or achieved.
Okay. But now my question is, because I remember you, you did explain that, you and Dave did on the last order. Is this something we need to do in a sense that we have to change the, the, the title of it or the, the name of it? Do we, to remove the word forensic, is that, is that, put a negative into, somehow a negative view on the town of North Bramford if we're having a forensic audit? I guess is really my question.
Let me just add one thing before you answer, please. I guess we have conflicting views right now because I think in the first presentation, you had noted that it was actually a positive thing because funding agencies would see that we're looking into ourselves, we're making sure we're doing stuff the right way. Either you said that to him or somebody did. And now we're hearing that forensic might be a negative and may hurt, so I'm kind of confused.
Sure. Well, I think I said in a general sense, auditing is a good thing.
Okay.
Because an organization that is conducting a self-assessment, good, bad, or indifferent, that's a noble goal. If you're trying to determine how I can make something or how you as a body can make something better, that's water, you know, because if you're going to act on recommendations and make something better, I think rating agencies would applaud you for that. You know, we did a audit of our pension system. It was funded at 27%. They gave us recommendations. We implemented the recommendations. They upgraded, I've better rated. So audits are generally a good thing. I think what the town manager's saying, and frankly treasurer, I don't know if the words in his mouth, is that because it is, using the word forensic, with respect to system operations and internal controls, would that raise a concern or could it potentially raise a concern with the rating agency? So I just wanted to distinguish that. I hope I clarified that point.
So do you think it could potentially raise like a red flag or something?
That, that is not for me to opine upon. You know, I have to be careful there, you know. Your town attorney is, is not an advocate. It's, it's an advisor. And I would advise you that whatever you choose to, to publish, we will draft it or redraft it or edit it in a way that carefully weighs and considers the concerns that it raised, but also gets you to a place where you're comfortable in terms of seeking responses to the, to the RFP and ultimately deciding to either proceed or not proceed with the audit.
When we voted last month, we used the vote for forensic, so we have to change our vote.
Understood. So.
I was looking for the next.
So we made a red line revision based upon manual edits that we received from town staff. That's why we've made it as a track change so you can see what we changed. As I said, it's not our decision. It's your decision. We provide advice. You set public policy. So we will do whatever all of you ask us to draft it to do.
The only, I guess as a council, we can talk about the naming. I, you know, there's something with all the bonding that we're gonna be doing is something to definitely take into consideration. But the one thing that I, I do want to say that I'm not in favor of is the timeframe, reducing it from 10 years down to two or three years. I think, you know, a five-year time span, five to seven, something like that would be much more reasonable. So that's the only thing I'm not in favor of.
One of the, one of the reasons that triggered that change is because you might not have records that go back 10 years. So the Connecticut State Library produces what's called an M1 schedule as it relates to document retention. And there are timeframes for certain document retention. So some documents have to be retained indefinitely. Some documents are retained for 10 years. Some documents are retained for five years. Some documents are retained for three years. Believe it or not, some documents don't have any retention requirements. They can dispose of them immediately. So I think that one of the comments from staff, which is a valid point, and you have to figure out how you want to navigate it, is that you might be seeking a review of records that no longer exist because they might have been disposed of under the state document retention records policy. They could, they could exist. I'm just, but I'm just saying they might not. Through no fault of anyone here, it's just what the law says you keep and what you don't keep.
And what's the impact of the changing the comparison to the towns of X size range versus another? Does that cover a lot of it in any way?
I think, I think what, that was just noted because we're not at 20,000 residents yet.
Right.
And I saw the line go through, so I thought it was to figure it out. I think Mike raises a very good point to put from the 10 to the 20 range because that would cover your population here as for comparative purposes.
Yeah, it could be, yeah. I just, I think that rather than striking it all, just, and.
But we will do whatever you want us to do. It's your decision.
We have, we have a general audit in here, and I don't know. I can't see going for another general audit if we already have one. From the independent auditors' report, I think we need more to look at our policies, procedures, what we do and how we do it. And I think that's more of a forensic-type audit than a general order.
Is that audit that you're referring to the same, is that recommending operational changes and internal, looking at internal controls?
Yeah. It's the one we get every year, basically. It's just a general view, a little snapshot of what we do. And I can't see spending money on another little snapshot of what we do. I want to see how we do it, what's right and what's wrong.
I don't know. Is this, are you referring to this, the annual financial report? That's more reconciling the numbers, right? Isn't this like a caper sort of thing that's showing you?
Well, it's got, it's got the independent auditors' report in it from people we pay, AO and company.
They'll give, what generally they do is they give a, an executive summary of their assessment. And then as you go through it, they, they do an analysis of your fund balance reserves.
More of a financial analysis versus an operational analysis?
They look at your long-term debt.
Yeah, so it's not an operational analysis?
Yeah. They look at a forecast of your bond, their debt mix. They look at your revenues. Where your revenues come from, EI, property taxation, what other class centers they come from. They break down your expenses by class center.
That's what I thought. So a general audit that you were referring to, though, is not that, right? It's more of a, you said it looks at your internal controls and your operational.
If you read this, and you get this every year.
Yeah.
And I've read a few of these for your town and for others. They don't do a deep dive into operational.
So it is different.
Metrics. And whether you call, and by the way, whether you call it a forensic audit or not, if you look at the actual language and what you're asking them to do, you're asking them to look at internal controls and, and your internal systems.
Yeah.
So you can call it, you know, forensic, non-forensic. You could call it, whatever you want to call it. The narrative is what is going to determine the response you get.
I think as long as the narrative is the same in what we're, what we're seeking, and if we can take forensic out and that doesn't raise any red flags, that's good for all the bonding that we're gonna do, you know, as long as we can still.
Are you guys double A too?
Yes. Yeah.
So, I mean, that's a, that's a good credit rating. And you're obviously about to bond, you know, 66 million dollars, so you want to make sure you keep it there. You know, one day, maybe hit that triple A. You know, we tried. We didn't get there. We tried. It's tough.
It's tough.
I would think that we should take a little type of review.
I agree.
To make sure we know what we, what we want or what we're, you know, what we as a group want, want to, want to audit. That's my opinion.
I agree.
Because I think we also have to, and I've said it before, we have to make sure, whatever we do audit, when we see improvements or, or opportunities for improvement, that we act on and we just don't take this, because this document, you know, usually gets put away. Because if I recall, other, other audits had opportunities in there. I, I mean, I just received this one tonight, so I don't have any idea what's, what's in it or not in it. But it's, it's a terrible thing to just do an audit, spend, spend, spend taxpayer dollars and not, not utilize it.
So to answer your question, Deputy Mayor Zampiano, you really want to focus on not so much the title of the audit, but what you're requesting the prospective bidder to be responsive.
Correct. Yeah, and I, and I totally, I totally understand that.
That's the deal.
But I was just wondering, you know, when I see the title change, that just, you know, poses a question. So then you, you carefully answered that. But, but now that, I just, I think we should all be clear on what, what, what we're trying to achieve out of an audit. You know, so we're looking, looking at the right, right procedures or policies or activity to make sure that we're spending money properly.
So maybe we table it, everybody takes a look at the RFP again, make sure that any concerns that we may have had are addressed in it?
And maybe we need time to review this because we haven't had time to even look at this report.
Right.
Yeah, I would be careful with that because.
This is like a caper. This is like.
Yeah, that's not, that's apples to oranges kind of thing.
Yeah.
I really don't think there's a hell of a lot to gain by texting over the caption being forensic or deleting that phrase. Any rating agency that's worth consulting is going to look very carefully at what we're doing at every audit that we've ever had, not to just pass. And they're gonna come up with their rating. They're not gonna base it on the title of the document or the RFP we put out.
Right.
Just my opinion. I don't pretend to have any expertise in this area, but I can't believe they're that naive.
Yeah. I, I agree. I agree. But I just, what I'm saying is we just need to, I think we need a little, little time to think about it and understand what.
That's fine.
What the, what the, what the audit is we're trying to, to put forth, if that's what we want or not want.
I agree.
Table what the curve for.
So I think that if you have additional edits or suggestions, I think the best way to process that is they should all go through Mike. And then Mike quarterback's any recommendations, and then we'll communicate with his office to determine next steps.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
We need a motion to table that?
Well, it's under unfinished business. It'll just stay under unfinished business.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is new business discussion in action. The first is resolution for North Bramford Pollinator Protection.
Yeah, this was the resolution draft I showed at the last meeting, and I did not receive any, any comments or suggested changes, so it's brought back to you for your approval. It's a non-binding resolution, but helps with our sustainability.
So I'll make a motion to move the resolution for the North Bramford Pollinator Protection.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any further discussion on this? Can I have a vote, Michelle?
Well, I'm in.
Aye.
Next is reward of bid number seven, 2020, 2021, concrete work for pavilions at North Farms and Northford Parks.
Right. So you have the memo from Jesse and concurrent REIT Commission on the award for Sorelli, for the, for the concrete, if I'm pronouncing it right, Sorelli. Sorelli Construction for the concrete work. They are bitter, yeah, I'm sorry, bitter.
Gordon. I'd like to make a motion toward bid number seven, 2020, 21, concrete work for pavilions at North Farms Park in Northford Park to Sorelli Construction out of North Haven at an estimated price of $30,400.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Gold. Any further discussion? No, can I have a vote, Michelle?
Paul David.
Aye.
All right, next we have a request to add a part-time custodian for Parks and Recreation Department.
Yeah, and this is in here because essentially it's a part-time position that they'd like. So it's a new position, if you will, because they need someone to cover the evening and weekend hours. And so with technically still a hiring freeze in place, these items have to come before the council for your blessing before we go forward. And Jesse is here to answer any questions you may have.
One question that came up is, is this COVID-related or is this a position that you're looking to make permanent even after COVID?
We'd like to make it permanent after COVID. Moving forward, just to keep the facility clean, it should be implemented. Right now, we only have daytime cleaning, even though our programs run late into the evening, and no weekend cleaning. So if we're operating on the weekends, there should be staff there to clean. So it would be something we'd like to continue and have put it in the budget for next year. But would like to implement it prior to, so.
Is this position needed as part of your reopening plan?
Yes, yes.
And that's kind of dictated by Esure Health as far as what has to be done to reopen?
To reopen the fitness room, yes, absolutely.
How many hours will be that's first?
Not to exceed 19. So it would be a part-time position with no benefits.
And there's existing money in the account, so there's...
Correct.
Out of the current budget, so there's no...
Out of the current budget, out of the current part-time wages. So there would be no additional expenses. We're not expecting an overture in that account. It's just a new position.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the hire of a part-time custodian position for the Parks Recreation and Senior Center.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Felicia. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote, Michelle?
Paul David.
Aye.
All right, next we have Stanley T. Williams Roof. I guess Rose, you want to talk about that?
Oh, you got missed, item D.
What about D, Building Committee?
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, next is Building Committee for New Police Facility.
I had asked for something because I didn't come up with a PP committee. They want to be building it, but I understand that probably the prevailing view is to turn this over to the permanent project building committee.
Well, I think based on the conversation that we had in what the attorney told us when we were voting for the high school is because one of the requirements for the state was that we had to appoint a building committee. So that's when we asked, could the town council be the building committee? Or did it have to go to Permanent Project Building Committee, which was not full at the time? We had a lot of vacancies on that. And what we were told from the town attorney is basically, it's either the town council or the Permanent Project Building Committee, one of the two. So my personal feeling is now that the Permanent Project Building Committee is full and we've filled all the spots on there, I think this building project should go to the Permanent Project Building Committee. That's the way the, you know, the boards and commissions that were set up by ordinance, that was the purpose of it, so.
I only brought it up because it had been voted on by that committee. They want it to be the building committee, but obviously it's not the prevailing view. And in terms of the permanent building committee, I will bring forward a name because we have to reappoint an alternate to become the permanent building committee.
Well, there's two on there right now.
There, yes, but one of these terms is hard. We will bring forward the next one, uh, next one.
So no action or...
No, so may I, I think it would be in order for the next meeting on the 16th to prepare a motion, a resolution to move the Police Department project to the Permanent Project Building Committee.
Fine.
Okay. Next is Stanley T. Williams Roof. Rose, you want to...
Yes, so as liaison to Park and Rec, I was included on an email that Jesse had. They had some substantial leaks in the building last week. And she had sent some pictures to Mike and things. And Franny has since sent his guy up there, plus Franny was up on the roof, to look at what the condition of that roof is. As you know, that roof, replacing that roof, has been on our CIP list for the last number of years. And we've been just doing some repairs to kind of get us through. But I'd like to have Franny just kind of report to us what he found when he went up there and what his recommendation is.
Yeah, so we went up on the roof. So the leaks that were happening last week had a lot to do with the snow that was up there to warm and all the rain we got. So what happens is the snow was up there, it turned slushy underneath. And the water has no place to go but down. So the roof is in bad shape. It's cracked all over. I mean, you can't, you're not going to repair it. I mean, was that...
You just put a little emphasis on that.
Must be a magnet, yeah.
So the roof is in bad shape. I mean, it's cracked all over. Personally, I wouldn't repair it right now. We did get a price on doing some repair work by the hour. It's, you can't see where it's leaking. You would spend hours looking around, other than the fact whole thing's cracked. It's like a road roofing type roof. We're going to be keeping the building, I'm assuming. So if we are doing anything to it. There is a part of the roof that's wood. And if it continues to go like that, we're going to be ripping that deck off. The only unknown is asbestos. There hasn't been a test done on it. There are some quotes floating around there. But I would think, you know, just as a number, anywhere from 800 to probably 1.2 million. I mean, the other quotes were, what year was the quote, Jesse?
2018.
2018 was one, and then we just got one recently for 895. But that was with the question mark on the asbestos. So part of the roof has got a steel deck. The other part has got, for whatever reason, it has a wood deck on top. So right now, it looks like it's all right. But if we keep going the way we are, we're going to be doing a lot more work to it.
And so on top of that, so once I found out about it, I did contact our state rep, Vinnie Candelora, and asked him about if there was any possibility for state reimbursement because there are still school programs in that building. And he is confident that he can get some state funding for us on the roof replacement. And be able, his idea is that he would like us to do this sooner rather than later to get it through. And he will work with the state as far as, because of our other bonding programs that we're working with right now. So that was his recommendation, that if we are going to go forward with it, now is the time to do it. And he's confident that he can get us some state reimbursement on the roof. So my question to Anthony is, because this is not in our CIP budget right now, and if we were to go forward with it and want it to get it, I mean, you know, chances are it wouldn't happen until summertime by the time we went through everything that we had to go through. Can we wait until the budget season and put it in for the 21, 22?
Yes, yeah, that makes a lot of sense, yeah. We're going to be bonding short-term money probably in April. The kite has over until November. So it won't make the April pass, obviously. But for the November bond sale, we can definitely include it in that money that we'll need at that point, put it in the budget. And we'll pick it up when we get off bond in November. Because you're talking, even if it's a million dollars, we're talking half a million, 600,000 out of pocket. So we have to bond that program.
Okay. So, and we can put it on the agenda for the next council meeting. And because if we decide that this is what we're going to do, we will have to have the Board of Ed approve the project first as a school project, you know, to go through the steps of the state to get to file for reimbursement and everything else. So that's where we're at on that roof.
Citizen statements and petitions are next.
This is kind of going back to the Board of Ed and the EDO 49s. EDO 49s, the Board of Ed files, which is the budget document. But the EDO 46s, which is actually they require test for money, we do here. Those are filed by us. We do all the financial records, and we file EDO 46s with the state. And one more question, on your talk about the word forensic or not, if you get your iPads in front of you, go to Google and type in forensic audit and see what pops up. I think has a big change.
Thanks, Anthony.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time or location, but I'm Bob Whitworth. You've heard of me. In this holder's one. And I like to think I was brought up with some manners. So I want to say thank you to each of you for your support and your endorsements. You've seen my resume. That's only a little piece of me. I'll spend 15 seconds, and here's the rest. As a young kid, 11, 12, 13 years old, I basically lived on construction sites in Maryland, Connecticut. They built Interstate 691 through the town, there are malls, there are squares. I had my own car and hat. I had my construction boots. And I was never picked off a construction site. And I've always had that bug with me. But a little thing got in the way, it's called a career. So I was an air traffic controller 40 years, and I'm still in the business. I'm just not talking airplane. And I've been waiting 40 years or more for this opportunity. And I'm very humbled by it. So I hope not to disappoint. I'm a hard worker. I'd like to think I'm a decent fellow. And I just want to say thank you. Can't wait for you to go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I was wondering who you were.
The bald guy. Thank you, Gary.
Okay. Anything else, Michael?
No, I have nothing by email.
No, wow. Anthony?
No, negative, no comment.
Wow, okay. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Thanks for coming.
Michelle, thank you for the...